Now we're recording. So I will call this regular meeting of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at 7:07 PM. First item on the agenda is the pledge, so if you'll join me, please. Thank you, everyone. So I'll just say ahead of time that I, as I did last meeting, I tried to log in with my camera and microphone off so I could screen share. And it won't, it just makes feedback, like really bad feedback, like we had at that one meeting where we all got frustrated and wanted to go home. So I'll check in with Jack about that. So I can't screen share. If there's something I need to screen share, I might need to figure out another way to do it. The only thing I have is an invoice. So I sent those around to everyone, so they should be, you should be good with that. We'll go through the agenda, public input. I don't think we have any public, so. Here we are. Correspondence, anything else I have is part of the regular meeting reports. I don't think anybody else has anything, so we're good with that. And then meeting minutes from last meeting, I will make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes from June 26, 2024.
I'll second that.
John Manti seconds it. Does anybody have anything that they need to add to, change, update from the minutes? Oh, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done with that. I don't know who needs to abstain. I'll check that.
I think everybody was there.
Yes. Yep. Okay. So into our old business, Police Station Training Range. I'll give you a couple of things and we'll see if Mark from ST Osborn. First of all, let me say who's here. So in the room, you can see some of us, you can see so me, Roy and John from Public Site, First Electionman Dan Carter, you can't see Attorney O'Brien, Town Attorney, and Rachel McGrath, who's here for later in the agenda, but you can pipe up if you have anything else you need to put in. Up on the screen, Public Site, David Horvath and Lieutenant Durkin from the Police Department, Dr. Carver, who will update us on some school projects, and Mark Duprey from STV. So I've been in contact with several people. Evan, who's given me some input on some things. And Chris Baldwin, I emailed Chris Baldwin last week about the CO. And I included STV and CES Commissioning and a few other people, so that if Chris had questions, they could all get answered in that one email, because I was forwarding email answers here and there, and this person was on a different email thread. It was getting confusing, so Chris Baldwin did reply, saying that he is in the process of reviewing all of the reports, and he would let us know if he has questions. So we still have this temporary CO. All of the work that Downs did has been inspected and checked, et cetera. CES did their bunch of pa- I sent the reports around to everybody. If you wanted to read it, it's a couple hundred pages, but that's good to go and should have all the information they need. If they have questions, again, I asked them to please let us know, so we can point them in the right direction to get answers. There were a couple of things that Action Target had to repic- well, not really repair, was the flip up iPads that kept hitting the ceiling, so they adjusted those. Those are good to go, and as far as I know, everything is working just great. One thing that I have to check with Kathy on is we were supposed to give a list of people to be notified. There's set points with the building temperature. And we're supposed to give a list of who should be notified, or who should get if an alarm goes, whether it's too hot or too cold. Who gets that notification? So that the person goes and and turns the unit on. Because a unit doesn't come on, it's not like your house where it comes on automatically. I thought it was going to come on automatically. It's not set that way. It's more controls than the unit itself.
We had discussed that at one of the meetings, Nancy, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we discussed that with low temperature or high temperature, the unit would cycle on.
Right.
Take care of that issue.
Right, so it is set up to be turned on if, if the set points are reached, an alarm goes off, somebody's notified, they go turn it on or turn it off. So that we Evan is actually checking with ESC to see if the controls can be changed. Like I said, it's not the unit itself, it's the controls and the way the controls are set up. And that's the way the controls are set. Now, if the unit is going on and off a lot because of the set points, that uses up the filter more quickly, and then the filter's got to get changed more frequently. And the filters are really expensive. So it's difficult to say is it going to kick on and off a lot? Because I think we need to track first, and we need to know the answer of can we set it up that way? And we haven't had that, heard that from ESC yet. That was midday that we asked that question. So. Go ahead.
They should be able to set up a trend log.
Yeah.
Temperatures and everything on and off, and that would give us, especially like with weather like today, you know, this past couple of weeks and the next week, which temperature is going to be really crazy. That'd be something you could set up and just see if, hey, this thing's cycling five times a day. What do we, you know, is it going to, like you say, the filters aren't cheap, so.
Right. Yeah, so right now, the way it's set up is that when those set points are reached, somebody gets an alarm, or a couple of people, three or four, some people get an alarm, someone goes in there and kicks the unit on. Which Lieutenant Libertini did two, two, three weeks ago, when we had really hot, and then it got really cool again. And he said it was, he went in, it was eighty, let's say it was eighty-seven, and the set point's eighty-five or something like that, and then he hadn't gotten an alarm. So again, we have to check and see. I think John Perna and Kathy were supposed to come up with a list of people who should get the alarm. And we got to check on that. Again, you know, yeah, do we want it cycling on and off all the time? Wearing out the, not really wearing out, but using up the filter and then changing the filter more frequently.
Yes, I thought that the design, such as Dave was saying.
Yeah.
Provided this, so that, you know, we're, we're I think we're trying to sit down, we don't want it to be ninety-five degrees in there.
Right, yes.
So kind of no matter what the filter is, is we have to
Yes.
give it a fire, et cetera.
But it's, the unit is set up to do that.
That's
but the controls
That's what I
are not.
That's what's awkward, because we had quite a bit of discussion on that item, I believe, that that was taken care of.
And that's an ESC thing, and not a like
Yeah, I think it's, it's just a control.
Yeah, checking into
Okay.
Checking into that.
And the same thing on the low end, we don't want it down to
Yeah.
thirty degrees.
Right. So if there are set points, and an alarm is supposed to be sent, and Libertini said he didn't get notified, who did, or did anybody? So that's what we have to really check into. Um. Let's do, yeah. So we have an in- one invoice tonight. We have an invoice from, also from Downs, however, that's for their retainage. And since we haven't gotten a CO yet, we would like to hold on to that, which I explained to Downs, and they're fine with it. Until we get the CO, even though Downs stuff is like done, we still needed an invoice from ESC, a final from CES and Action Target. So we're waiting for those, we'll see what happens when they come in. But, and again, I can't show, I got a budget from Evan at the last minute, well, earlier today, but it wasn't at my computer. And it's not much different than the one he sent. The, the question about network synergy, which was about their invoices, we approved an invoice. We approved an amount not to exceed. And then we approved one invoice, and then when I got the list from Finance that showed four invoices, I was like, where these come from? And they were approved by the PD without coming through us. And that Evan was to touch with them, and there was one amount that shouldn't have been part of this project, and they're going to credit the town. It shouldn't have been billed for, is what they said, and they're going to credit the town for that amount, so we'll be following that, too.
I believe, I believe the amount, Nancy, was four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents that Evan got credited.
Right, and, and the not to exceed amount was like nineteen hundred. And if we're over it, it's a couple, by a couple hundred, we can't do change orders after the fact, we already paid the invoices. So we just have to balance that out in the budget. And I believe, we look at the budget, there's like thirty-six hundred left in contingency. Yeah.
Thirty-six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents left in the budget.
Thanks, Mark. Because there was an amount, too, that I think I had mentioned the last time I checked with Brian Humes, there was a reimbursables amount that they were carrying for fifteen hundred, and I think we paid a hundred and seventy dollars to have something printed, posted, whatever. Rest of it went up into contingency, so, so that's good. And Mark, is there anything else that you have that you wanted to bring up?
Nothing at this time, other than, you know, our perspective on the project is that right now, as we get the CO, I think our role as OPM is pretty much wrapped up, but we're still here to support you and the board if you need us to come in and, and help. We've run to our max on our fee on the project right now, and we know your budgets were very, very tight, so we're just going to close it out from our perspective, but we're still here to support the town if you need us.
Okay, there may be a question or two of like if
I'm sure there will be. I, I when I heard the whole set point discussion, that reminded me of one of the last meetings I attended, where I thought we had settled that it was going to be automatically adjusted and, and go back and forth. And we, we had agreed, and this is what I remember from a long time ago, we had agreed that, you know, we would just bite the bullet on the on the filters, but I couldn't be wrong. David, do you remember that? You were in that meeting.
Yeah, you're exactly correct, because it was, do you ruin equipment? Or you spend a couple of dollars extra on some filters? I know the filters sound but they have pre-filtered and everything as well.
Yeah.
You know, to your point, Mark, and I do appreciate you bringing this up, that the pre-filters aren't that expensive. It's the main filter that filter out the lead. Pre-filtered, collect all the other crud. So I, you know, I think time will tell, but to your point, yes, we did go through this in detail.
We did go through it in detail. I remember it explicitly, and I remember that our decision was, you know, we'll replace filters. It's going to become a huge hassle for whoever's on that list.
Exactly.
Hardly unheated, otherwise, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of temperature fluctuation.
Right.
Right, so equipment doesn't react well to that.
Yes.
So you're saying that if it's just heating and cooling, and it's not dealing with lead and whatever else particulate matter, et cetera, does that all go through the same filter, or are there two separate filters?
No, so there's going to be, there's pre-filters that take out the big stuff, like the dust and all that crap, Nancy, and then you got the smaller, the more finite filters that will take out the lead particles. Those are after the pre-filters, so you're going to really filter, like, remember the school project, we went on to MERV thirteen filters from MERV? So basically, you're taking a MERV eight, for the sake of argument, putting it in front of a MERV thirteen.
Okay.
MERV eight is going to take out all the big particulates, all the crap that, you really just want the dust and all that crap. And the MERV thirteen will take out the fine lead particles, yada, yada. So if there's nobody in there shooting or anything, that stuff's not going to matter, because you're only taking out the larger particulates.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so and then, like I said, Evan had asked that question of ESC and had gotten anything back yet, so we'll keep checking into this.
Because I remember Dr. Carter was very well schooled in that.
Okay, anything else that anybody has either questions on, or I just have the one invoice, which I can't put up on the screen. But if there's any, not anything else, we'll do the invoice, and probably do the Downs one next time. So this is an invoice from CES. I'll make the motion and explain a little. So I make a motion that we approve CES invoice number two zero two three three five two dot zero zero dot zero zero dash zero 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 six for the training range for the month of June twenty twenty-four in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
John Manti seconds. I have to make notes. Um, so this invoice that I received, the total amount that they say due is nine thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. We approved the last invoice at our last meeting, or maybe a month ago, for the six thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars that they said is also due. So things kind of crossed, the check probably didn't get to them before they did their accounting, so I'm specifically highlighting that we're paying the two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. So if you looked at that, then you'd be like, why are we only paying this much? That's why. Any questions or anything?
Was that money already taken out of the budget?
I believe it was. I have to go back and look at the budget, because
I'm, I'm assuming it was, okay, but I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, it was a month ago.
Right.
But it's part of, so the budget that Evan does shows the contract amounts, change orders, final contract amounts paid to date, but also committed to date. So committed to date means we've agreed to pay it, but we haven't paid it yet.
That's what I was assuming.
So that contingency is, this is taken care of in there, because this is part of their contract amount.
Correct.
And they also said they did have to make one, I noticed, I asked specifically on the last invoice, said they made an additional trip out. They're not going to bill us for the additional trip, he says, not to worry. All right, we're good with this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done? As I said, the Downs one we will do next time, and we're waiting. Mark had said that they're working on updating the the invoice that was sent originally that was incorrect, so they're working on updating that.
Right, yeah, my, my apologies on that. There was some miscommunication about the process, and I had brought Angela in. And I probably didn't do a good job explaining that to her, but the, we will correct our, our invoice, resubmit it, and we'll have one change order request on the Johnson School, which is going to be a small amount, but it just has to do with the additional work we did on that for the level spreader. And then we still have a remaining budget on, this is all STV stuff I'm talking about, but we still have a remaining budget left for the Rockwell School. And I understand that Geraldine is working with Dr. Carver on the audit stuff, and we still have a little bit of time left on that. Right now, she's only filled four hours, so if she needs more than that, we'll probably need to add something to that, and I'll talk to you about that later once I know more, but at this point in time, Geraldine's at your disposal if you need her. And we're happy to help, so we have money left in Rockwell, we're probably going to use it all up, but and then we'll need a little change order for Johnson because of the level spreader, but as we mentioned before, we're going to write off our expenses on our costs on the training, on the training range, because we know you guys don't have any more money on that, and we just want to be a good partner.
Okay, and we'll go into the school stuff in a minute, because that's the next thing on the agenda, but if we can finish training rates.
Guys, one, like, hey, Mark, thank you very much. That was a painful meeting, the last meeting.
I heard.
This discussion. And I'm glad you reconsidered where you were.
Oh, no, 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 I mean, you know, we, nobody, honestly, nobody likes to work for free, but i- in reality, we want to be a good partner for the town of Bethel. We've worked with you folks for a lot of years. Three plus years now, and we don't want you to be disappointed.
Yep, I appreciate, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mark. And like I said, we're going to, once we finish up, if anybody has the other either questions or comments on the our range.
Lieutenant Durkin.
Got unmuted himself.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hello.
Hey, uh any feedback from the troops on the use of the razor? Everything going well, just for our, our own comfort?
Yeah, we, we had a training day a couple of weeks ago. Everyone got cycled through low light shooting in there. And for nothing but positive things from everyone. It's been really good. Yep.
Yeah. Thank you, Lieutenant Durkin.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's anything else on the range, we'll do that, otherwise, we're going to move into the next item on the agenda, which is Rockwell and Johnson Schools. Good to go?
Yep.
All right, so Dr. Carver's here, she's got a little bit to let us know.
Sure. So as Mark already indicated, I have been working with Geraldine over the past couple of weeks. In the audit process, you know, one of the things that happened towards the end of the project was that there were several, I think, and I wish Geraldine was here to explain it, because I think she could explain it much better than I can, and possibly Mark can help me. But I know she communicated several times to the committee also, because I was there at the meetings, that there were several items that Rizzo did not submit change orders for when they were spending down their contingency. And, and we were also under the impression at that time, because of, of the the change in the budget from Johnson, Johnson to Rockwell due to the environmental issues, that we weren't going to, when we exceeded a certain amount, we weren't going to be able to recoup any of those costs as eligible cost. So I talked to Dan, and we met several times, I believe, about it. And I then subsequently had a, a meeting with Ellison, who is the new, I think she's the Director of Grants Administration at DAS, she, she's relatively new in DAS. And they are allowing us to go back and relook at some of those costs that could have been eligible expenses as Rizzo was spending down the contingency. And so what Geraldine has done for me, and she, I believe, we're like almost there, like, I might have to go back to her one more time, but she did a wonderful job creating several spreadsheets, which I have ready to go, and I'm going to submit to the state tomorrow, DAS tomorrow. And so what, what we hope the end result is, is that we'll get more reimbursable expenses back from the Office of School Construction as eligible. And that's what we're trying to work through right now. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, because we talked about and I know I was on a meeting sort of toward the, towards the end of the time that before Geraldine retired, where we were looking at, she created a spreadsheet, like you said, of all of the potential change orders that Rizzo could have submitted, and they did, they weren't specifically trying just to spend down their contingency, but it's part of their paperwork process, where they did not submit them in a timely fashion. Because for change orders to be part of the reimbursement process with the state, they have to be submitted within a timeframe. And they, a lot of times, miss that timeframe.
So they, so and, and listen, I think a lot has to do with what's going on with Costas, Dan and Ted's at the state, too. And, and to be honest, he said to us that once we made the request to change the money with the environmental issues between Johnson and Rockwell, he was very clear about saying, you cannot go back to us and ask us again, but but
Yeah.
but now the state is reconsidering. So like I said, I'm going to, I'm going to copy the committee on my letter that I'm going to submit with Geraldine's spreadsheets. And Teri Jansky has, because, I mean, obviously, Teri's retired, but she was the one that did the bulk of the work during the project, so she's been working with Geraldine and I, too. So the three of us are working together, so we're going to resubmit it to the state tomorrow. And then what Ella was hopeful about is even the possibility of talking to the planning department within the Office of School Construction and possibly seeing if we don't have to submit change orders, you know, based on what the expenses were. So that's what we're working through right now in the process.
That would be great. So I had been asked that question about the reimbursement, and I think there's a confusion between how much we're sending in as change orders, which let's say if we send in a hundred thousand dollars of change orders, we get the reimbursement at the reimbursement rate, it would be the forty-two cents on the dollar, so.
Well, yeah, about almost forty-six.
Oh, that's good, going up a little.
Yeah.
So forty-six, we, it will be, yeah, it takes a hundred thousand dollars. Go away.
Yes.
A hundred thousand dollars, we would get forty-six thousand, something like that.
Right, so I'm, so again, to Mark's point, you know, I'm, I think we're almost done with, at least at this point. Now, if the state comes back to us and wants to sit down and, and talk about each of the different invoices and what was done and the scope of the work, we may have to suck Geraldine again back in. But I want to see what, see what happens as a result of, of the information that we send them now.
Yeah, I, I'm perfectly fine with that, Dr. Carver, and Geraldine, of course, she's more than dedicated and happy to help you guys, so.
She, she absolutely is.
Yeah.
She's been fabulous. She was at a wedding last week, and she was emailing me, so she's really been fabulous.
So, and I, I did send because the question about how much was left in Johnson, how much was left left in Rockwell for STV, I found the previous invoices, which were a while ago, which had the amounts left, and I sent that to Geraldine, so she could see that, yeah, there are amounts left in Rockwell, but Johnson, their last invoice we got, which again, has to be updated because it's incorrect.
Right, right. We need to put the original contract value in, and then request a change order for, I think it's like eleven hundred bucks.
Yes. Because we had, there was supposed to be like X amount for Rockwell, X amount for Johnson, kind of like set aside for this audit process, and I think as we were working on the remediation of the stormwater management area, that wasn't being paid attention to, we were just, because there's things that came up with that, that we had to sort of do a little extra work on when the pipe was damaged and stuff didn't get delivered on time, et cetera. So we'll put that change order together, we'll do it, deal with that, and then hopefully, and I don't know if you want, if STV needs to make a, if you think you need to have more in the Johnson one, so that the whole audit thing is, if it's a not to exceed amount, you know, we don't get to that point where we don't spend it. I guess you have to look at it and see, are there how do you, how do you divide your time, STV divide their time between Rockwell and Johnson with the audit?
I, I don't think that there's not much that they have to do, Nancy.
We were just going to bill our time to the remaining amount that we had in, in Rockwell. Which is, I believe, and I have it here in front of me, I think it's only eleven, thirteen hundred dollars. So, and Geraldine's built four hours, so that's eight hundred bucks, so we have a little bit more time, a few more hours there if you need. And if you need us to help more, we're, we're happy to, so.
Yeah. I think we're in really good shape at this point, so it shouldn't be too much.
I would suspect so, but Geraldine is, is spot on.
Yeah, and the audit has gone really well. It's just, this is just an additional thing that we can recoup on behalf of the town, so we're working on it.
So does it look like that the Office of School Construction is kind of moving along quickly with this, or is it?
The audit? Oh, no, no, it's going to take eight months. But that's normal, and that's, they're, they're, they're I mean, they're done here. They, they've been here. They worked in Brad's office for several days. We met with them for several, I mean, we, we met them off and on during that timeframe, provided information. But then they go back and do what they do. But they didn't have any, we were able to provide all the information they needed, so I don't think there's a lot left.
Okay.
But, but he did explain it takes months. Why it takes months, I don't know, but it takes months.
It's covered.
Yeah.
Okay. So is that it on the school projects, do you think? We don't, yeah, we don't know what voices or anything like that. Like Mark said, he'll put together a change order for Johnson. Rockwell still shows, I think, twenty-one hundred, or no?
Yeah.
That's what I see, but I can check again, and you guys can check on your end. All right, so go back to, where was I? Got to find my agenda. I think the HVAC is next.
It is.
Okay. Thank you. So if we don't have anything more on the school projects, we'll get into the HVAC. I believe some RFPs went out recently, is that what?
Yes, so it's my understanding that they both went out, and Dan may know better the date, but sometime this week. Both for the owner's rep.
Today, Dr. Carver.
Okay, yeah, the owner, for both for the owner's rep and for the, the the, whatever, the, the larger bid for the actual construction. And, yes, and I think that, you know, the one thing I did express to Nancy, that I'm very concerned with the timeline. So, you know, one of the questions was from Nancy, was should we get the owner's rep on board and then and then, you know, send out the bid separately for the the actual HVAC project construction? And the problem is, is the timeline. We have a really tight timeline. I'm hoping that they're going to extend it. But the monies have to be, and I wish Jen was on the call, but I think the monies have But the monies have to be, and I wish Jen was on the call, but I think the monies have to be committed or spent by December twenty twenty five. So that doesn't give us a lot of time to do the work. And we felt like if we waited again, that it it could be problematic. So we decided again to go out with it concurrently, but hopefully that the owners rep will be on board to help the committee make the selection, you know, at that point.
That's, you know, being an owners rep, that's what I would recommend and would always recommend whether you guys were a client of ours or not. That it's best if you, and you can get the bigger, better value for your owners rep to have them help you with the selection of your team. Right? So, I mean, ultimately, you you would make the selection, but we could do bid leveling and looking at scope review and things like that, so that you made sure you got the best contractor for your work, for your, for your dollars, right?
Right. So so I believe they're out for a few weeks. I know that there's a walkthrough. So set up, I, and I I apologize, I don't have the date for that, but I can certainly send it to you, Nance, so that the committee knows. And then we'll see where we go.
Yeah. So they're they're both out. You're not sure which, if they're both due back same time or if they're both back different time?
I don't, I wish I did. I don't.
I don't know if they're posted yet to the town website.
They are. I know they are, because I had, I had somebody reach out to me about it.
So Roy saw him in the paper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you want to know when things like the walkthrough and stuff are, you can.
I will, yes, I will absolutely, I find out for you and email the committee too.
Okay. Yeah.
One thing that, I don't know if we could do this, if you have five contractors there looking at it, and if you get one or two bids again, would it be worth reaching out to the other contractors and asking them why they didn't bid on the project?
Yeah, we we actually did, John, and Tyler Stevens, who's our new Bob. He needs a better name than the new Bob, our new facilities. Yes, he, and and I will bring him to a meeting soon. I know Dave knows him well because they used to work together. But he has extensive contacts within the HVAC fields, so he has actually reached out to a couple of other vendors to see, you know, why and, you know, at least, you know, making them aware of the bids. I I don't remember how many people came to the actual walkthrough. I think it was three or four. You know that we had one bid that came in and then one was just, I think, right outside the, they couldn't submit because they were a little bit late. And so and and listen, they weren't on time, so they, so they couldn't submit it. And that's, that's that. But he's absolutely trying to reach out to some different folks to see.
Well, I think the approach last time was what might have been a little bit of a challenge to Dr. Carver, if you remember. Because we helped a little bit with that early on. And the idea that the subcontractor would be a GC, I think that was a nonstarter for a lot of this, for a lot of the HVAC contractors, they did not want to assume the role of general contractor. And and the ideology behind that from Kohleronan was they did not think a general contractor was really needed and that, you know, the town could save money by eliminating the general contractor, just having an HVAC be the prime and hiring an electrical contractor to work under them. But it didn't seem like the HVAC contractors were very much interested in playing prime.
Yeah, and it's it's also, I think, another challenge we're going to face is that a lot of school districts across the state of Connecticut got this grant.
Oh, yeah.
And we're going to be competing, whether it's a general contractor or HVAC contractor. So, yeah, so we just have to work through it and let's see what happens.
Yeah. So I I did pull up the RFP, which is actually one saying that it's looking, we're looking for a contractor, we're looking for an owners rep. And the walkthrough, it says it's optional Thursday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty four, from two to four P M. at the high school main entrance.
Okay.
And I think we have to realize too that in in a lot of situations on on sort of larger and large is not really. It's kind of like one of those ambiguous terms. But a contractor who wants to be your general contractor may bring two other contractors with them. Like your, like his, their electrical contractor and their plumbing contractor to go through the walkthrough with them. And so you might say, oh, well, there's seven contractors were here when one might be the GC with a bunch of other people who are just scoping it out so that they can then submit bits to the GC.
Right. And I don't want to speak for Jen, but I think she can, there's not that many people there. She can, that becomes apparent when you're kind of going through. So we'll see what it brings.
Yep. And I think that we have to, as a commission, know that so that information's out there, the bid documents are the same because the plans are the same. It's basically just rewriting the invitation to bid. And I I don't know if, again, if there were any changes to the bid documents as far as the scope because the bids came up high last time. Is that true? That's a question.
There are no changes to this.
Okay.
No.
No. And are there any like add alternates or deduct alternates?
The way it was, the way the bid was set up was that way. Again, I I don't want to speak to it because I am not the expert, but I do remember that that there was the base bid and then there was a bunch of alternates. That, and that's, that's the way it was set up.
Okay. So we have some flexibility as far as if the base comes in decent, then we just don't have the alternatives. Got it?
Correct.
Okay. Because I think we have to be in agreement with the commission that if the bids come in, whatever, we don't, you know, high or whatever, we we don't get to go and change a whole bunch of things. To, because you, you know, they're bidding on what's in the documents. We can't start making changes so that we get a better price. And that's kind of not how you can do things anyways. I mean, even for any project, can't start. You might, you might do a scope review, but you can't go say, oh, well, how about if we do this and you can lower your price? That can't be done in a public bid.
The other, the other thing is, and I know I've already said it, I'm just going to say it again, our timeline's really tight. I hope, I hope it gets extended. So obviously anytime something changes, it's going to delay things. I mean, if I learned anything from the Johnson and Rockwell project, I know that 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 happens and sometimes obviously for legitimate reasons, but this one's really tight.
Yeah, this says the bids are due on Monday, August fifth.
Okay.
In the morning. So if if there's an extension, is there a timeline like that from your experience if they they just kind of, it's random, all over the place, you don't?
Well, we've been advocating, I've certainly been advocating at the state level. I've, I've last year I was the president of CAPS, so I I got an opportunity to talk directly with DAS about the grants and 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 just talked about the unrealistic timeline that they set forth. But they haven't, the reality is they haven't changed it. And so we have to operate as if it hasn't changed. I mean, and if I've learned anything from this date, if they're going to do it, it's going to be like probably later on where they'll say, like, we're like eight months, two year into it and say, okay, we'll give you, we'll give you a six month extension, that kind of thing. And it is kind of ridiculous, but it is unfortunately what the parameters that were, because if we don't spend the money by that point, we don't have the money.
So you don't, if we don't spend the money by whatever that end date is, you don't get any reimbursement at all?
No, the way, the way that, this is a little bit of a different project, it's set up a little differently. This is my understanding, so I'm going to have to fact check myself, but it's reimbursable. So unlike, well, I guess the school construction projects were too. So what what happened is once you have, you know, you pay the bills, you pay the invoices and you, what would happen is we would apply for grant reimbursement. I just don't think it's going to be as detailed as what we did in the core CT system with the big school projects. So, but the reality is, if they've approved a certain dollar amount, which they have, if we don't submit the invoices by those, that timeframe and and have the work done by that timeframe, they'll say that they're not going to reimburse it. So that's, that's where the timeline is a lot tighter on this project.
Right. So I'm remembering with Rockwell and Johnson, you were able to submit for reimbursement kind of during phases of the project?
Same thing.
Okay.
Same thing. But the project has to be done by December twenty twenty five, according to them now.
Let's give.
Again, I'm hope, I'm hoping it changes.
Are they saying the end of December twenty twenty five?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's tight, Mark. It's really tight. So I can't imagine that they're not going to extend it a little bit. But but I don't know how much. And I believe they're using ARP, the state is funding this through federal ARP money. You know, and so I think they have federal timelines too.
That's going to be an interesting scenario.
Yep.
Timeframes when we got to order equipment and there's a ten month delay on equipment.
Everybody in the state.
Whether you're going to do it or not.
Roy, you are correct. And I, I think it was Roy that said it, but you are correct. And and that's why I think that they're probably going to have to give a little bit in an extension because
They're going to ask for a guarantee somewhere because I think this town is probably going to have a hard time saying, yeah, we're just gonna jump in here. And the time clock runs out. I mean, we see what happens on this equipment. It's just been brutal.
Yeah. The good news is we we can do the work while kids are in school. So unlike some of the other projects that we've had to deal with, now we're going to have to move kids, like we're going to have to stage and move kids out of spaces at different points. Not the end of the world. We did it, we did it for a couple of years at Rockwell and Johnson. But we have a little bit more flexibility with that too. So, you know, we're not tied into that like two month summer, we got to do everything. We fully anticipate that we're going to have to phase it in that way with with while schools in session.
Good.
Wow.
Because one of the things that yeah, obviously she's really hit hard, the point of the timeline.
Yeah.
There'll probably be other things that come up with rules that we have to follow that are different. I know our town attorney Melanie is on top of that and will get us information as we need it. Because staying on top of all this stuff is going to be super important to make sure we don't miss something from reimbursement. Right. And the other, the other thing, well, there's two things. The other and the thing was mentioned that this project has kind of come up at a phase where the building, obviously that building, the building is not used to taking it home. You're getting it midstream. And I know there's been a lot of interest in, you know, making some changes along the way. And so far, we're kind of, we're still in the same scope. That's going to be very important going forward. You know, with the, with the fire range and changing all the HVAC and stuff, you know, well within your purview, you know, as now, since you're getting this midstream, we're really going to have to scale and try. And that was something I just kind of wanted to reiterate because we talked about it with the board of selection. And then the the other thing is the change order process. You know, just really making sure we're on top of it and that, you know, things get approved quickly and they don't do work before it's approved. I think we we've talked about that. They weren't really normally doing work before it's approved. I think we had one issue come up in the fire range where they did the ten grand worth of work and then we were scrambling afterwards. But, you know, kind of what was on with the the Johnson project where the change orders were just done and were actually not submitted, the work was done and we didn't get we we might have to work together on a process for that, whether it's, you may want to appoint a smaller committee who who comes in and knows those approvals or something that, you know, to keep you having to meet more frequently. But this is going to be a crazy project, I think.
Right.
You'll have full support of the town and me and whatever you need.
In general, change orders come to us and we approve them before the work's done. With Rockwell and Johnson, it was difficult and I gotta push it off on Rizzo because their paperwork was dismal and they didn't always get us the paperwork in time, which is part of what we're looking at now with with them being late with the change orders. And then sometimes they just wouldn't submit them and they would pay them out of their own contingency. And then we wouldn't be able to get reimbursement from the state because of that timeframe also.
Yeah.
And, you know, generally we get change orders and we approve them. If it's something that's like critical and big, we we call special meeting, we pet, we've done that. We did that through the Rockwell and Johnson process where we sometimes we met every week for a month in it because trying to move kids from one school to the other and getting change orders done so that work can get done. And when we found out those bump outs at Rockwell were falling off the building and we had to rebuild it that way.
Yeah. Well, I know, I know Melanie and I have talked about even kind of putting in the contracts so folks know, don't go do the work.
Right. And they generally do, but.
Yeah, we just want to make sure they're on, that we're doing this. Because we also don't want something to come up that's not reimbursing it. That would really put us in a pickle.
Yeah.
And and the other thing I really wanted to make sure I mentioned tonight, we have the ability to appoint two more people. We want to fill your other spot. And we have the ability to appoint two people who are Bethel residents who can be involved in this project. If you know somebody local, a Democrat, Republican, who you think is great with HVAC, please let me know.
Okay.
You you all know people in the community, if there's somebody on your mind.
Can Tyler do it or is she not a Bethel resident?
She's not a Bethel resident. Now, he's certainly going to be here to give advice, he just can't vote.
Do we ask Bob?
Actually, if Bob were interested, then he.
He, he isn't. I already asked him.
I keep bugging him every time I see him.
He kind of, like with vigor, said, no.
So we we need one person to be a permanent Phil Gerald vacancy who was filling. It was Dino. So it's way back to when Dino resigned after a year in because he's, because he couldn't keep going. So we need that. That's a public site person. And then you can appoint two ad hoc people from for that, for this particular, you know, Board of Ed, High School, HVAC.
Yeah, and I'll move on that as fast as I can. I just, I don't want you to be held up with corn shoes.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want you to feel like just spinning wheels.
Yeah, it's been kind of crazy each time. We just kind of squeak it through. And each meeting I've talked about, does anybody know anybody?
Does it matter what party they're from right now? Or are we looking one from each? Does it?
We do one from each.
Well, that's for the Board of Ed, but we need one person, we need one Republican to be a permanent or to be a public site member or unaffiliated if you're okay with unaffiliated.
It actually has to be a Republican because it was a Republican seat before. The charter is clear that we have to appoint another Republican.
So to fill in for Gerald, it would have to be a Republican and then the other two could be.
Actually, technically, it could be unaffiliated. Because it's, we have to have one from, I mean, if we have one from one party, we have to have one from the other event, but I believe we can do.
For those two, you could do that. But we also think that some people who have been members.
I I think charter says, or if you're talking about the two ad hoc, the two gesture special for this project, I think the charter says that you have two, you have two members from each party.
Which ones? The independent party and the Republican party or the American party?
Charter together.
Yeah, well, we'll check it out.
When we have charter.
No, these are, yeah, because we've been running over there. But anyway, I just, I also just wanted to reiterate, like, you have to have some full support of the town. I'll be here watching any that you need.
Okay.
We'll help with the wrong.
Yep. Okay, good.
Yeah, and I'd like to see us get an owners rep on board. If you have an owners rep on board as soon as possible, because that is so helpful.
Yeah, very helpful. Okay, so are we good with the HVAC and we're getting some people, trying to find some people? We'll all go stand out on the street.
I'll put something on my newsletter Friday.
Yeah, but then you're going to have to.
So we'll have to sort them out.
Yeah.
Is Josh, is Josh?
Well, he said, I don't know if Josh is back.
Josh moved back. I do think he moved back.
I talked to him last week and I said, where are you living now? He goes, none of your business. What'd he say?
He's still in Danbury.
Well, I get a, I get a voter list change and it looks like he's back on the board.
Oh, that must be new.
Yes.
All right.
When you move in, yeah, you know, it, I don't think, don't be a Republican or a Democrat.
I know how I can get a hold of him though. Josh, will you go for a beer?
He's a, right there.
Let's not.
That's your mission.
Okay, so we're good with this. We're ready to, thank you, Dr. Carver. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good night, everybody.
All right.
Take care. We got to wake Rachel up.
Bye.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere, David. So then last on our agenda, poor Rachel's been sitting here, the locker room project. So a couple of months ago, Rachel and Dan and I walked over to meet with Peter Ecker and went through ideas because and I've said this at a few meetings where Rachel looking at that end of the building from GP room down is, you know, yes, it's parking wreck, but it's not. And then wanting to get input from Dan, like what does the town need, which Rachel was big on, looking at it from, this is the town's building, it's that parking wreck's building. So we met with Peter and kind of came up with some ideas of the locker rooms themselves, instead of being these big giant locker rooms, which we kind of don't need, is what you've been saying. Making them smaller, a couple of toilets, a couple of sinks, a couple of showers. Can we do that? Make the whole thing smaller? And then get some more space. Can we do that? Make the whole thing smaller? Um, and then get some more space back there for other uses.
Storage.
And well, so
Really just multi-use store, multi-use rooms really, which we don't have a lot of. You know, I mean, when you think of we take up a lot of space in the gym because we don't have place for like our preschool programs because the GP room gets used for, you know, town events and things like that, or the stage, the stage really has become a construction site more than a stage for our theater program because it's such a huge program. So, I mean, you know, having more space, storage is always an issue, but, you know, I I think if we really look at just being realistic with what we should have and hold on to and keep, I think we could cut our storage down a bit, but space would be more important, I think.
So you think it's like a, like a I I not a classroom, but something like a classroom to have events for the kids in?
Like almost like an open room where if you wanted to put tables and chairs, like if we wanted to have a preschool program with tables and chairs for or you wanted to have a fitness program, you can have a fitness program in there.
Makes sense.
You know, just a large, like this space, but you know, no rod, like nice clean floors, kind of deal, just a bigger space, which we don't have.
You said a multi-purpose room.
Almost something between a half of a gym and a GP room.
Right, right now, when you're looking at, might even have three divided, two dividers.
Right, having that out. Peter came up with a bunch of ideas of depending on how large a space was, could you cut this room in half and have, you know, a little music class going on and something else going on over here? So
With a movable screen kind of thing.
Yeah.
Could be open or closed. Cause one of the things that we looked at, and remind me if because the two bathrooms, so there's one that faces that direction as one entry and one that entries over here. So the, going into the women's locker room, you go in, what was considered the women's locker room, you go in from the gym, but you can also go in from that hallway, hallway lobby, the face of school street. The men's or boys or whatever, you go in from the back hallway that comes in up the ramp and they're there and from the gym. So and there's a plumbing wall, which I think you've both been in there, you remember with the getting the abatement stuff done. And I think what, one of the things Peter came up with was here's the plumbing wall. And could we put both of them on that same side and have the other side be this big open space? Didn't he kind of sketch something like that out?
So we looked at a lot of different ways to just get rid of a lot of unused space that we have within the lot. Like, you go into the men's locker room, if we didn't have COVID and construct the um the fake mask area cage, I mean, it's really just an unused space that collects things. You know, whether it be volleyball nets or whatever, but those are all things we could store other places. The women's locker room side, which we created the big huge closet, which was really created when the library was under construction.
Yeah.
Which now becomes our catchall, but it's a, it's a great space for us when we think of storage. But we talked to um Peter and Nancy and like, we could have that and be more realistic with what our storage could be just to create more open space for us. I mean, it's a lot of unused space.
Creating open space, it'd actually be less, I would believe, less expensive than making locker rooms and bigger things like that.
Need it. Cause even thinking, like we were talking, cause I said to Dan, I said, the reason I don't think of it as a parking wreck space is because if there is a town emergency, it becomes a shelter. And I don't know about you, I'm not showering there.
Sure.
I think Richie Zou, which is the only person that showers in there.
I mean, I think, I think it was important to just have a couple of showers, not
Yeah.
Not
You know, you have a handicap shower and one shower and you know, you've got two toilets. Cause now with the GP room lobby
Yeah.
Done, we don't need the scope of the toilets that we had had in mind before, because the GP room lobby really can handle a good amount of people, even for large events, you know, so I I don't think it needs to be as fancy as as it was originally proposed years ago.
So we did get a proposal finally from Peter Eckert, cause he had said initially, I need a $10,000 retainer. And then he sent the original from, I don't know, twenty fifteen or before proposal, signed by Eileen and Doug Arndt, who's
Both are long.
Three people, three people walk away.
So we told him we couldn't work off of that. So he gave us a new one, which I sent around to everyone. And I don't know if we should have it, did Melanie review this? Do you know?
I don't know if she reviewed this one. Um, but that's okay. We'll, we'll get it done. I mean, the, the, for me, the most important thing was I wanted to check back in documentation to make sure this was officially assigned to fall inside the building.
Well, so I didn't go through all the minutes, but what I did find was that what I sent to you both in whatever date that was, twenty twenty one, I think, um, that
I know we signed the money.
We had a board Board of Selectment meeting that I went to and we asked for $20,000 to get started.
Yes.
And that was approved by the Board of Selectmen to send to the Board of Finance and the Board of Finance approved it. And it's still sitting there, Brad had confirmed that. Um, so beyond, I don't know if it was ever unassigned.
But when, when that happened, they did assign it to the board, I guess.
They gave us the money for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I didn't know, like, we've asked for money for things and we've started it with parking rack or whatever. Just wanna make sure that's cool.
Right. Well, I think that the original
I think originally it was under our
Yeah. And that was, well, the 20,000 is our, but way back.
I was saying back when this originally started with the big boards and all the
That was through your budget. That was not a separate, like a
Yeah, right.
I don't know.
Okay, so we'll just make sure the next meeting we make official.
So the, what I'm seeing in this, and I can't put it up, I could try to put it up there again with it making a whole lot of noise. I can't make it bigger either. Um, there's a couple of questions I had, and if we need to have it um reviewed by Melanie, we should probably do that and everybody that, the questions I had. Well, what I, what I'm getting from this and looking at it is they have, they want a $10,000 retainer, but they're also saying it could cost between 10 and $15,000 to get to. They basically want to come up with some schematic ideas for us, which then will give them the opportunity to say, the rest of our actual costs are going to be X. And then we have to get a structural engineer, MEP person. And then anything else that's excluded in their exclusions. And again, I want to figure. Um, I'm learning from Melanie about exclusion. She's like, every time you see exclusion, it's gonna be a red flag. You wanna make sure you're checking in. Why is
Read them off you? I can see it.
Um, well, the exclusions, I'm remembering a couple of things that could possibly be something that um we want to take a look at and see, okay, is that something we need to include? Because instead of hiring one architectural firm with a bunch of people under it, we're hiring all these individual design people ourselves. It's a little awkward, but it's what we did last time. And, you know, if we're looking at the scope, they're saying they're, you know, coming up the, I don't know if you see it the same way, both of you, um, as kind of a schematic idea. And then later on, there'll be construction documents created, an additional cost, because what we need is the cost of all that, so we can go ask for that money. And oh, you got the exclusions there.
We're looking at areas not covered by agreement, right?
It's just section three exclusion. Other architectural services not listed above are excluded from the scope of service offered here. Project management, construction management. You hire, we have Colliers still on board for project management. Construction manager, we, um, or general contracting, we hire somebody to do all that work. Um, board meetings, I'm not sure what that means. They say later on or other places that they would come, you know, give reports to the commission if needed. Um, construction observation and field reports, that would be covered under the other part of getting the construction back documents together and doing construction administration, I'm assuming. Um, scheduling, estimating, that's usually your GC or CM at risk. Civil engineering, we're not gonna need any landscaping, hopefully. MEP, we already talked about that. Structural, we talked about that. Data communications and audiovisual. So if there's anything in that area that either needs to be added or redone, because there's, I don't know, cameras down there. I don't know if there are cameras down there yet. There are, we might wanna put them.
Yeah, I mean, I think
Not in the locker room, but
I would think that if anything, Jack would probably want to upgrade internet capabilities down there. As soon as you guys do the voting down there.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, cameras would be amazing, but
Yeah.
Take, yeah, maybe HVAC.
Right. Any kind of moving coordination, packaging, relocation. So moving shit doesn't get, sorry, stuff doesn't get covered by them, them. Hazardous materials, which we already did that area, but if we need to do another check, we can, it's done. We
Yeah.
Not only did we test it, we abated it.
Yep.
Should be good. And then permits, applications, et cetera, which permits that we've done by contractors. So I don't, it, I would say you know, have Melanie give it a check. But also if anybody sees anything in it that is questionable.
Thing that I, I get concerned with this one is, is it's really just kind of a very piecemeal approach.
It is.
And in one sense, we somewhat asked for that along the line, but now it really looks like we're in a position that we want to put this together. And times have changed from what the original plan was. That was a significant plan that they put together.
Yeah.
And, you know, very nicely done and what have you. I don't know. I, I'm not too sure whether we're going the right way this time because there's so many exclusions from where we're going. I'd like to work with Peter, but, you know, I, I'd like to see a more complete contract.
Well, we will, when we get to the point of
That's not the way I want to start it, though. I'd like to have, I'd like to have it included in schematics, you know, you know, two or three meetings with the client to get to a point of developing it. I'd like them to kind of develop everything. We're gonna be left, I think, a little bit of a hang up when we get to the next step. You know, we're always gonna be kind of pleading with him to get I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not totally comfortable with, with where, I would like to see it more complete. That this is my own pitch.
Right.
Not sure, was it before when you, when you did this, or did you have access to his drawings? Cause in a way, this you're kind of just playing off of where he was before and continuing on.
Yeah.
Are you, are you feeling like we got to have to go back to the very beginning?
Well, he has all the drawings is is the thing, which is very helpful. I mean, he has spent a tremendous amount of time on this project. So, and we, and we paid for
Yes.
For time also.
Right.
You know, but the, you know, we haven't gotten it off the line, but it really sounds like now you guys are much closer to what you know, what this new product is gonna look like.
Mm hmm.
And it just seems to me that Peter is not quite on board with us. Uh, you know, I think now we kind of know where we want to be. Like, let's get this whole, you know, no, get us, get us the whole thing. Get, get us the inclusion with the MEPs and the, you know, you know, put a number on it so that we know where we're, we're at.
Well, so the last time
Yeah.
we had Peter doing the architectural, we had Archer doing the structural and the guy from Romania or wherever he was from.
Doing the, yeah.
Exactly. So and we paid them. And the town paid each one individually.
Right.
So he gave us another person to use for MEP, I think it was still the one structural MEP guy. He was another person a while back saying, here's this guy, he gave us a price, but we never went further with it. Now that we're changing the skip, so he, he's saying he's gonna get us with this through the schematic. And then when we're more complete as to, yes, we want this size here and that size there, then we get another proposal that covers all the other stuff. This way I'm understanding it. I get what you're saying.
I, I like the structure in that we get, you know, three shots at coming to a general plan, you know, three meetings that we go through. Talk to them, what do you mean? Everyone seemed to have a pretty good, I'm listening to, you have a pretty good handle on what you want to do. He's got all the plans there.
Yeah.
So, you know, no, this one goes here, cut this one half, move this one over, take these bathrooms out, what have you. Okay, give me that as a final product on that. Give me the MEP, give me the, give me the structural, give me the whole project. I want to know where we are at this point. And if anyone has that capability, he has it.
So
He knows that project.
So you think
I, I don't want to be left in this lurch in three months where, you know, and I, I understand where he's coming from, but because we've activated this project six times. So I, I totally understand. But the way I'm looking at it now, now we're ready to go. So I'd like to convince him of that fact that we're ready to go. Let's get a, let's get a kind of complete proposal for us.
So you want him to put together, him to be
Suited nuts.
Like Brian Hughes, who hires all these
That's, well, put together a budget for, you know, I, yeah, I'd like them to, but maybe he's not the person for us. Maybe it is Brian Hughes. I don't know. I'd hate to, I'd hate to switch. I don't want, I'm not advocating that at all because we're gonna lose a lot of ground.
Well, we are because we're gonna have to pay somebody to come in, start scratch.
Right. But by the same token, I'm seeing us do this three times with, with Peter. And again, I like him, but I, I really don't want, I, I want to have, I'd like to see a complete proposal.
And that's what we had.
Then get us a budget for
Last time.
Each one.
And for the, for the MEP.
But he hasn't even come up with, he's, he's gonna give him a, we'll give you schematics for this. No, we want to have
Well, but schematics because we're still trying to figure out where we're gonna put everything.
I realize that, but I think we're close enough myself that you could do that in a couple of meetings.
But we have a couple of meetings with him?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we need to pay him.
Yeah, I put together that proposal.
Which is what this is.
I, I agree, but it seems to me that we're, we've stopped in the middle, then he's gonna come back to us and say, now to finish this project, you're gonna have to pay me additional.
Yes, because we're just getting schematics to the point of now we can flesh everything out. It's gonna cost this for him to do. It's gonna cost this for MEP. It's gonna cost this for structural. And anything else that we need to get down there.
I don't see it as being a complete plan. I'd like to see him put together a complete plan.
He's gonna put together a complete plan after we get the schematic part done. That's what I'm understanding.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm missing. So
Well, let me see.
Can I add two things?
That's what's great to me, Nancy, is that
Let me, let me throw another
To the completed project.
Wrench in the, in the works here. I like doing this. I know the main focus is the locker rooms area, and I'll just call it the locker room for the sake of calling it an area. Um, but I would also like, personally, I would like to see which is to finish off the hallway. You have that one nice section, then you've got this hallway section that looks like it came from nineteen sixty-two and it hasn't been touched.
You mean the gym lobby?
Yes. You have, you have those high energy official windows there.
Never had that.
And I remember, I remember um during a selectman's meeting years ago that um Paul Zakowski, Selectman Zakowski was extremely adamant about that, windows.
Rich Grayton did the same thing at a meeting.
And, and so that's one thing. And so maybe that would be another overall, but this, that would cost this much money in locker. So if we don't have this much money, the priority is locker. If we have, if we, if we can get, the second thing I want to throw out there, which I thought worked out really well, and I know you, Rachel, were about a company like Gordian, who you hire them and they hire their contractors, they're all on the state bid list approved contractors. It's a cost, it's gotta be a cost savings. They, they did that, they did the, the, the initial hallway, they did a great job. We, we did, the contractors worked well with them. Anytime we had a problem, they came back and fixed, adjusted things. It looks great. Why can't we go that route again?
We can certainly talk about it, a bit waiver, we had to do it. Probably depends too on how the money works, because we're looking for a steep grant to support this.
Cause if, we also talked with Peter, because it came up when we probably put Steve Grant last year, could we draw this so it can be done in phases? Cause it does talk about, his proposal talks about new women's and men's restrooms, multi-purpose area for parking wreck, miscellaneous storage areas. But it also goes on to talk about at some point, I can't remember where project, the project scope. Uh, it talks about the lobby and, cause we talked about the window wall. If we can break it into phases and we get a steep grant, we can do the hallway.
It asks for the moon. And if we don't get the moon, then we, at least we have
And you have, and you have a project, right?
We've, we've missed the last few steep grants because they've only given it to folks who put up a match. So we're gonna put up a match. I've told the board of finance, the supplier, you're gonna do a match. I've also been told recently they've raised the amount of steep grants. We were figuring out $500,000.
And we have to match.
We love to match probably twenty percent. We can do that.
Yeah.
But there may be more steep money available. So knowing what our options are, maybe we can go for a bit or not.
You know, and, and I also, and I could be wrong, if you don't have, with a steep grant. You know, and, and I also, and I could be wrong, maybe you know, Dan, with the steep grants and stuff. They were looking for more of a complete. Plan, not just, hey, here's a piece of paper with lines and this is what we want to do. No, they want to see a plan.
But they also wanted to see that the town had made a commitment by approving one. So, and they.
So. And that's going into this next one, that's what we'll do.
That's what I'm trying to get, kind of.
And, and make a shovel ready, because we need to have a more, um, finalized set of plans.
That's what I.
And, and, and I'm new to this part. I kind of thought that's what he had on, and he was just updating.
Yeah, but we're changing.
Yeah, we're, we're changing, just. Just a little bit, I mean.
Because.
The bathrooms are getting really.
I, I understand where you're going.
Here's the two locker rooms. Boys, girls, or men's and women's. Now we're talking about them both on the same plumbing wall, but here. With this being a big open area, maybe all the way across, then this being storage. So that's, it's changing it in that you're still going to use your plumbing wall where it is. You can't change your plumbing wall without Jack hammering up the floor and we don't want to.
But I guess my, my, what I'm trying to, trying to understand is he has a pretty robust set of plans from before. And we've just come to him and said, all right, you put all this time and energy into this. Can we tweak the inside of that thing for ten grand? And will we still have a set of plans?
But he talks about in here that it could cost ten to fifteen, if we give him a ten thousand dollar retainer. We might, and he would bill us, the retainer sits there, and then once we get up above ten thousand, he's got to start taking it off the retainer. And I mean, he does talk about doing, um. With the scope. Preliminary design, design development, construction documents. But those are going to be based on, those are going to be based on. Schematics, because they, he could do all this and give us a price on what it, what it's going to be if we keep everything where it is. And, you know, we sat in the, because the, like, it's the women's locker room is full of shelves, like Rachel said. Men's has like nothing in it, now it's full of theater stuff, but we were sitting in this big, open, empty room going, we don't need that. There's two, couple of showers and a couple of urinal and a toilet and a sink, that's all we need. And the rest of it was lockers, they're not there anymore. We don't need lockers.
So this, from, from your perspective, we're done with this, when he says, what are we going to have?
Just, I think a basic outline of where everything's going to go, which walls have to go or come back or get torn down. And. Then it's got to be looked at by some structural person, M V P. And he's got to flesh out where the doors go, where's the destruction, where's the construction? Structural's got to agree, oh yeah, you can tear that down, but now you got to put this up to hold that, you know, that.
So, question for Dan as far as when we, you know, ask you for money for designing, what have you. Are we better off to come in and say, look, we're going to need thirty grand to, to do this?
Probably better off to know what.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to get to a point, because I, see, that's where I'm coming from, is I'm, I'm trying to get to.
Yeah.
Finish line. I want to see that.
We've been hitting that. Twenty-five, thirty-five yard line is stopping.
No, because I really feel at this point, I think everyone here knows what they want.
So we, we have twenty thousand or a percent aside. That's, if we have to get a little bit more, that's doable. Hey, we're getting close.
No, I, and.
When we did this, we just said, well, I thought we were going to get a pretty substantial set of plans that we would have enough to go to. The, the states and say.
My, my impression, that's my impression is.
That's what we need.
Yeah, my impression was, no, we were not going to have that. We're, we're not going to be able to take that in.
No, not, I don't think we will.
He's, he's not really just taking what we already had and just upgrading a little bit. Can we ask Peter to come to a, a meeting so we can discuss these concerns?
See if we could.
Well, or. I think a couple of people might have to go meet with him again and go through it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll volunteer to, uh, to meet too, you know, Nancy, if something you're involved in.
But then to your point, what we would end up doing is putting on a ten grand retainer, asking for more scope, paying him more to do it.
That's what. I'd like to give you guys the, a, a real number.
No, I would too.
Hey, we're.
Yeah, we think we need. You need the shovel ready. This product is going to cost a soup of nuts. Seven hundred thousand dollars, I'm just kidding, seven hundred thousand.
If that's the number, that's the number.
That's just it, whether we like it or not. Let's find out what.
Because I think the, because I asked him several times before. For an estimate on what it's going to cost. And he didn't really.
He never has.
But. Before. The budget, the money that came to pay him and the other two guys. You, I think you had fifty thousand dollars put aside. And we spent all that.
Pre me.
Huh?
Pre me. Pre me.
Well, but, yeah, if you were. No, it was, and, and it was money that was approved. And it.
We did Gordian do all the plans? Cause I was, I was involved in the end of the.
No, they, they, they took the plans.
They built the plan. They modified.
They gave us an overall price with all their contractors are under state bid contract.
They used Peter's plans, which I think he's a little annoyed about because he wasn't part of it, but. And I explained that we went through the, and they used those plans and they didn't change them, but they. We had to move a few things just because. But they, Gordian went through with plans. It's actually B M P that does it.
Right.
Do they still have those plans? For the main section? Just the only lobby.
That's all we had totally complete, because the main section, we had gotten a bid from Holly. A little under a million and they didn't do prevailing wage and we couldn't use it.
So with all the, with all the money that we've spent now to get the plans where they currently are. Do we have those plans or do we own those plans in any way?
Yeah, we have them, but they would need to be updated. Cause they're how many years old? You got to make sure you can't just.
Building code change, fire code change, yeah.
But they've also been reduced quite a bit, in, in my mind. I realize that, Nancy, but I think we're in a pretty good position to talk to Peter over that, just to say, you've done this. You know, now we're finally here to do it. Let's, let's try to, can you, can you work with us here and get us a complete, complete project? I mean, he had beautiful plans, the plans were. I mean, right.
We have color mackerel, like. Boards of them.
Yeah, I remember that.
We went to it, didn't we do a town meeting at some point?
They were extensive.
Some of them have the skylight clear stories on.
Color boards placed somewhere. They're around somewhere.
So the, so from what you're, like, being the novice to this part. Well, you're advocating is we get him to finish up the plans, get it done. And then we go to a company like Gordian or B M P and say. How do we do it? Prices out for us.
Because then we're in the driver's seat, we have the plans, we're ready to go. And, and people want to work with you at that point.
It's too big to do Gordian.
We, we find out.
We can check.
When they're doing our task force, and that's almost happening.
Are they?
So in this case, all you have is get the plans, the scope, and then get it, that's what you're saying.
Yep, we'll have the plans.
But do we want, then we have to find out, do we want Peter to do construction administration?
We can get a price from. We can get a price from him to see what the.
But his total package would be. Schematics, design development, construction administration, which is what he has on here. But it's not a complete scope because, uh.
With all the exclusions.
Well, the exclusion, but basically. You know, construction documents based on approved preliminary plans, design development concepts. Materials and system selection, construction budget and schedule, we will prepare the following drawings and specifications. For required building permits, contractor pricing and construction purposes, but. This doesn't, you know, this is basically giving me a hundred, you have ten thousand dollars. It says for the services described in sections one, section two, dash one. Existing conditions, functional needs, program, and, um. Sections, this is Roman numeral two dash two. Preliminary design, we recommend you anticipate fees in the range of ten to fifteen thousand dollars. They have their hourly rate. So that's just the beginning. And then getting to construction documents is going to be another, and construction administration, I believe would be another. Fee.
From him, what's that going to cost?
He doesn't know until we know what we want to do.
Well, that's why we got to get him in and have him do the initial. What, the move.
But he's not going to do that. He doesn't have any money.
No, we, we have the ten thousand dollars.
I think we're okay though, Nancy, I think if we talk to him. And everyone's there, we can, we can define the scope, okay? I think that's the important thing that we have to get. I don't think Peter, Peter realizes where we are as far as, you know, on the scope. I think if we explain to him, this is the scope. That we're going to want to go with on this, okay, you know, so that we can zoom in on, on the finished product. I, I think that that will maybe get him off the thought that, guys, really don't know where you're going here. I'm going to be chasing this for the next five years. That's why I'm breaking it up in six, six different ways, so, you know, I'd like to get him over that hurdle and just say, no, this. We're all in the room here. Where's the scope? That's the project.
Okay. Cause this to me.
We're defining it right here, right now, we want you to decide that.
This proposal that he has here is a little smaller than, but not any different than. What we asked for from Chikonski Humes, or what, what, or they, what they proposed. Or what Perkins Eastman proposed for the schools. Schematic, design development, construction documents, construction administration. All those phases, but they had everybody working under them, they didn't have separate contractors.
Which is a lot better in one sense, because. It's easier for them than for Chikonski Humes to call up their structural guy and say, hey, I'm going to move this beam from here to there. Am I better off going here or am I better off going there? And in two minutes, they've, they've said, oh, that's going to save you fifty grand. So.
I understand.
So there's a little bit of, you know. Typically, it's nice to have the architect have some people under him or around him. That's the soundboard. I mean, maybe we just talk about that with, with Peter.
Okay.
If you want to meet with him next week, um, any afternoon next week, I can do it. Anytime, anytime after, uh, new time next weekend. Except for once I got a dentist's party.
I'm pretty good.
I think you want to coordinate with Rachel too, because I hope she can be there too. I'm not here next week.
Yeah, yeah, Rach, you're, you got somewhere available.
I'm so good at construction stuff.
But you need, you have a, you have kind of like a view, and then I don't know if you want to go too.
If I'm around, I may.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm pretty good after twelve, you know, barring like a camp tragedy or something like craziness, but yeah.
So why don't I email Peter?
Yeah, definitely could.
Um, and say, and have you, you, you and you on it. And say, at our meeting last night, we were discussing blah, 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 and we would like to meet with you again. And have a clearer idea.
Since we could define this a little clearer.
Right, and then if you specifically want to ask them, can we, once we do plans, get them together in phases?
We can, we can discuss all that with him.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you can ask him about it. All right, I will do that.
We can sit here all night and second guess this, that.
Yeah, that's just.
It's going to the worst.
I mean, is it a full pot to just get plans from our architect and use who you want to do everything else? Well, so, like, can I just hand them to who I want to do all the work or something?
When the plans, when the plans are complete, complete, like, when you have.
Stamp.
Construction documents. You then go find a contractor. Or contractors, depending on how, do you go through Gordian, I don't know.
But we can use whoever we want.
Yes, oh yeah. The architect is, you know, the, the, the town hired Perkins, the board of ed hired Perkins Eastman to do the. The school, Johnson and Rockwell. Getting us to a certain point so we could come up with a figure to go to referendum. With the agreement that. If money was defeated at referendum. We paid them what we owed them and they were gone. They didn't, we didn't have to complete the contract. But their amount took us through. Schematics, design development, construction documents, construction administration.
The construction administration, that's what we're kind of arguing about, but he wants to stay on to construction administration. Yeah, he has all these exclusions about what he can't, can't do.
Well, it's more like he's not going to design, um, which a lot of architects, either they don't have, they have somebody else that does it. Or you have to hire somebody to do, um, data and voice, let's say. Probably dropped off or something.
Like, I, I think Dan and I have the same question, so, like, just that he gave us the plans fully to where you're at, construction plan. If you brought in someone like Gordian, wouldn't they be the construction managers?
Um, they're the construction managers, yes, but construction administration is, if you have a question for the architect. You know, Gordian comes in or B M P's doing the work. And they come in and they go, oh, that door's not going to work there. There's a thing, there's a, you know, a hole in the floor.
Running the construction, he's just there to consult at his hourly fee.
Or the amount.
But in this proposal, he gets us all the way to construction plans. There's, there's another way to go about this, and this will really throw, it's called design built.
So he calls it construction observation. Which he calls an optional service.
A lot of design build contractors don't want to do this, they don't want to do municipal work.
That's the problem.
Gee, I wonder why.
That, I would definitely, I would keep that. I don't think you, I don't know.
Because I, I talked to my cousin, Paul Barrett, and I mentioned, and he goes, no.
All right, well, yeah, so we need a few more questions answered.
And. Yeah, so yeah, you can have meetings like Tuesday afternoon or Thursday afternoon, Tuesday or Thursday would be great for me. I know I have a dentist appointment on Wednesday at three o'clock. They take effort to get a dentist.
All right, so I will email him with everybody on it, and you guys will have to be back and forth about. I mean, I'll be checking emails, but I just won't be here.
I'm just no good on Friday.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
I don't think we do.
Hey, don't fall asleep on us, Dave.
I'm not. I was up on the roof for most of the day today, so I'm kind of wiped out.
Oh, must've been hot.
A little bit sunburned too.
Yeah, a little bit. Call for the puppies.
All for the puppies, all right, so.
Well, there's nothing outside to make emotionally adjourned.
I second that.
All in favor, I oppose. We're going to stop recording.